Good morning. I hereby call to order the meeting of September 8th, 2022, public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. This is an open public hearing and is being taped, recorded, and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable, and/or radio stations, and may be rebroadcast. The number of commissioners present is, well, the number of commissioners present is five, and Commissioner Hutchinson is on Zoom. And that will require a majority vote of four. As some individuals, but we're not voting today. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name and address for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary. Please keep your phone or PC microphone on mute unless you're speaking to minimize background noise. Thank you. So we'll begin by introducing the commissioners. Susan?
Susan Graham. Good morning.
Good morning, Stan Galagaski.
Good morning, Tom Riley.
Ted Gamboji.
Butch Tracy.
And do we have Tom?
Morning, Tom Hutchinson.
I am acting chair of this meeting today, and according to staff, this is our fifth meeting on AVO, which should speak to the concern about rushing this through that came up in earlier meetings. We have three objectives today: to discuss with you the progress we've made based on the input we've received in the earlier meetings; to correct some mistruths before they become urban legend; and today, our purpose is to continue our stakeholder input. We will not vote today, which should further speak to the concern about rushing this through. A few words about the conduct of the meeting. In our last meeting, the process was likened to bombing Pearl Harbor, and the staff was likened to the Gestapo. And those kind of comments have no place in the civil discourse. We want to focus on the facts and make decisions based on the facts, not on innuendo or ad hominem attacks. Today, we're not going to limit speaking, like we normally do, to three minutes, but we'd ask you to be considerate of other speakers as you come to the podium. So with that, I think, oh, I'd like to introduce staff: Kaylee Nunez takes care of all the comment cards and hopefully keeps us on time; George Worley, our planning manager; Tammy DeWitt, our community planner; Joseph Young, our city attorney; Matt Padrecki, our assistant city attorney; and a newcomer, fresh from Laredo, Texas, Kirby Snideman.
And we also have Michelle Chavez as well, our staff.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Michelle. Thank you, Kirby. So our first point of business, I believe, is our minutes. So has everyone read the minutes, and do they have any corrections? Then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, so moved to approve the minutes from the August 25th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Tom Riley speaking.
Butch Tracy, I second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Kaylee, you want to take the role?
Yeah, I'll do that. Butch Tracy?
Approved.
Tom Riley?
Approved.
Tom Hutchinson?
I approve.
Susan Graham?
Approve.
Stan Galagaski?
Approve.
Ted Gamboji?
Approved.
The motion passes six-zero.
So do we have a report from staff on our motion before us? Well, not a motion, but our proposal before us?
Yes, Commissioner, we do. We have a brief presentation where we would like to update you on the progress and share a proposed schedule for how we'd like to proceed. And we're going to share with you our approach on working through the draft that you've seen. We've got a draft out there, and we're going to work through it and update it. We want to share what our approach is going to be in that. We'd also like to share the proposed schedule of the public meetings we're going to have between now and between when this does come back for a vote on a recommendation to city council. And then we want to address some concerns and rumors that have been out there. Altogether, we hope to take about 10 or 15 minutes because we want to leave plenty of time for public comment and for your questions. If you have additional questions, we want to be able to answer those and not spend too much time on things that you're not concerned with.
Good.
So George is going to take over and talk a little bit about our staff approach and address a few concerns, and then Robin as well will come in and share and speak to several of those concerns as well.
As Kirby said, and also as the chair said earlier, we're working on taking public comment, and that's the primary purpose of today's meeting. So as Kirby mentioned a moment ago, we're going to try and be brief so that you can get directly to the public comment, and hopefully we can get as much opportunity for people to give us input as possible. One of the things that we heard a lot last meeting were comments about some of the parts of the airport vicinity overlay district that created a nonconformance. So I'm going to talk about that in just a moment because I think that's a huge piece of the public input that we're getting. So we're looking at updating the proposed draft to address some of the things that we heard about. We don't have a draft to present to you today because we're still working out options to address all of those issues. That's something that you'll get in the near future for your consideration, and then it will be available to the public as well so that they can take a look at it and hopefully give you additional comments. We're looking at potential for multiple options, maybe three options, maybe more than three options for how to address the AVO's impact on the existing development out there as well as any future new development. We can do a smaller footprint AVO, a smaller scale AVO. That's one option. That provides a little less protection to the airport, but it's a little less restrictive on property development in the area. So there's a balance to be had there. Same with option two could be a larger footprint or maybe a little bit more protective of the airport, but consequently more restrictive of development in the immediate area. And then there can be middle ground. There may be a middle option available that we come back with. One of the best things that we think we can come out of this is to bring you a menu of options to look at for adopting the AVO. Primary skeleton with the basic stuff we need, and then options for you to choose from for some of the areas that have been in contention or of concern to the public. That could include reorganizing the AVO into multiple overlay districts, which should be a very clever approach to addressing the issue of nonconformance. We could create separate, partial AVO zones covering different areas and allowing for all of the underlying uses and therefore making no one who is in an existing residence nonconforming. They would all remain a conforming use. There's no concern about future nonconformance affecting property values. That's an approach that I think is probably in the lead of the ideas that we have working at the moment. The public comments regarding that legal nonconformance status, we took seriously. We seriously looked at potential for not creating any kind of nonconformance that affects the average homeowner in the area, and we're pursuing those options for that very reason. So to follow up on what the chair said earlier, I think it's very important for us to reiterate that the reason we have public hearings is to hear from the public, listen to them, and take their concerns and ideas into consideration and apply those to whatever we're working on at the moment, in this case, a zoning code amendment. To that end, we're going to try and keep this short so that we get to the public comment as quick as possible. So again, one of the things that we've also heard is that there hasn't been enough opportunity for public comment in other settings and forums. So we're looking at potential for multiple public participation events, so at the airport, at someplace nearby, so that residents in the area near the AVO and potentially under the AVO's coverage will have an opportunity to talk to us and tell us one-on-one what they think or what they have concerns about so that we can try to address those. I have a list of dates that are part of this presentation. We don't have specific locations yet, but that's something that will be coming out in the very near future. And to tie into something the chair said earlier, we've had, this is the fifth opportunity to discuss the AVO in some form. We started with an introduction at council. We had a joint meeting with council and the planning commission. We had an introduction at planning commission. We had a public hearing two weeks ago. We have another public hearing today. We're not rushing this past the public. We need input, and this is the opportunity for that. The AVO schedule that we talked about a little bit ago is a proposed schedule. Obviously, there's flexibility built in because things can happen. We may or may not be able to do these things. So today's public hearing, you could close the public hearing or continue the public hearing. The expectation and staff advice is not to take any action today on it. Obviously, we have a lot of stuff we're going to bring back to you, so that would be inappropriate. We would like to start with a stakeholder outreach next week. We'll get notices out probably today or tomorrow and try and get folks advised as to a location. We're still working on locations for these things. You have potential for an executive session because there's been some further information that could be available to you regarding some of the negotiations on development agreements. There was a lot of discussion of development agreements by some of the attorneys who spoke to you last meeting. This would potentially give you an update. That's a special meeting is for the purpose of getting you some legal advice on those development agreements and how they affect your decision-making. Twenty-first could be another stakeholder outreach. We're looking again for locations, and we will send notifications out. Your next regularly scheduled meeting is September 29th. Because we're going through these public outreach opportunities and taking advantage of getting public comments, we're not proposing to have this back on an agenda for you to take any action on or even discuss at that meeting unless there seems to be a need for it between now and a few weeks before that meeting. October 5th and 6th, potential additional meetings. We would like to get the draft out as early as possible to you and to the public so that you can see what our conclusions or reactions or proposals are to you to address the concerns that we hear at these public meetings. And then your next regular planning commission meeting following the September 29th meeting is October 13th. And at that meeting, we believe you may have enough information to vote if you choose to do so and make a recommendation to city council. Reminder to everyone in the room, the planning commission makes recommendations to the city council. Decisions are not made here. This is a body that takes all the public input, takes input from staff, and helps produce a document for recommendation to council, and that it could go to council as early as the 25th of October. So again, this schedule is potentially flexible. Obviously, things happen along the way. We're going to try and get the draft together as early as possible. The October 6th date may be late. We may be getting it out earlier than that. That draft will be available on the city website. We'll identify it through press release. We'll have it available to you via direct communication. Lot of opportunities to get that information to you.
George, I have a question for you. On the 29th, we won't discuss this AVO, but might we have any other agenda items for the 29th?
We're working on that now. There are some items that are moving through that could be ripe to bring before you. We'll let you know probably within the next few days to a week.
Mr. Chair? Tom Riley? George, would it be possible to leave the AVO agendized on the 29th simply for you guys to report back to us as to what progress you've made?
Absolutely.
In some of the public hearings and things like that, and some of the public outreach?
We can certainly put an item on there for staff.
Just informational only?
Informational only.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
It would be helpful to see a consensus, nodding of heads? I see four. Good. We can do that. Are there any other questions about any of the first part of this? We're going to move on to a separate slide presentation to talk a little bit more about the AVO, and then I'll introduce the airport director to conclude that. Are we good at this point? Thank you. So the first thing we wanted to do is to talk a little bit about some of the concerns we heard. Some things we heard were legitimate, and we've taken those into consideration in making changes to the AVO. Those are things we were exploring. A few things were kind of questionable and maybe rumors. So one of the first items we want to talk about, there was concern about both Trinity School, which is an already existing school site in the area that's within the AVO boundary. They're permitted use. They can go in that location, and the draft of the AVO doesn't stop the school from being there. They can build out the remainder of their school site based on the fact that they're in existing use. The same would be true for the hospital, but a little bit different circumstances. There's a hospital site at the very north end of the city of Prescott limits, just north of the airport, that has plans for a medical office complex and a hospital at some point in the future. And we saw a little bit of a presentation at last meeting that showed a rough sketch of that. The boundaries that would affect the location of the hospital and medical offices are such that if we don't change the AVO significantly, the hospital can go in, the medical offices can go in, the arrangement of buildings on the site might need to be changed slightly. So there's nothing about either of those two because there's been a little bit of a rumor mill about them. Neither of those two would be adversely affected for future development. They may have to make a few minor changes to make sure that they don't encroach into impact zones or noise contours that are an issue, but both can develop as generally as they propose to develop. We have some additional information that Robin Sabata, the airport director, is going to give to you through the rest of this. Kirby and I are here. We're able to pop up and answer any questions you have on zoning-related matters. But at this point, unless you have specific questions about those two, I'm going to turn it over to Robin.
I'd just like to make a comment before Robin speaks. This is important because if we're going to make decisions based on facts, we can't have urban legends out there that become embedded in the community. So that's what we're going to try to address right now.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robin Sabata, Airport Director. So we've amassed a few. This is not necessarily all, and if anybody hears any more, let me know, and we'll continue to address those. Unfortunately, I have a prior engagement on the 29th, so I will not be able to be here to provide support for that briefing that you had requested, but I might be able to zoom in from the cruise ship if that works out. Okay. So the first one is, we heard a rumor that FedEx Ground Operations will soon be bringing in 20 Boeing 757s and start an air cargo hub at the airport. Just a reminder, the maximum gross takeoff weight for the runway is 100,000 pounds. A 757 weighs 255,000 pounds in terms of the maximum gross takeoff weight, and so it would crush our runway. We wouldn't be doing anything like that. Do we have some exceptions permitted for like the U.S. Forest Service and other providers that do bring in larger aircraft? Yes, we do, and we'll continue to provide that. We're allowed to do up to 500 of those exceptions a year, but not if our runway becomes damaged as a result. So rumor, not true. The next one, we heard that road noise in town is louder than the airport area aircraft overflight. The perception of that noise is what's really important. When you look at road noise, road noise is sort of constant. So over an hour, if you're talking about a freeway, there can be 2,000 passes on a freeway over a period of time. If you're talking about aircraft noise at a similar level, it's generated not by pretty consistent noise. Aircraft noise is a really, really loud event of 90 to 120 decibels, and then it goes down to zero, and then another event about a minute and a half, two minutes later. So the whole nature of the noise is different. As a result, it's considered more disruptive, the aircraft noise. So they're really not a fair comparison. The next thing, city could buy all the blocked airline seats and be financially ahead versus land acquisition or development. Let me go ahead and explain this. Right now, in the summer months, because we're a high elevation airport, we are a hot and high airport, and it has a relatively short runway. As a result, during the summer months, when the LA flight departs, we cannot currently fill or we block, the carrier blocks 20 seats on every flight from May through October. They cannot be sold. So the proposal is that instead of lengthening the runway so they can fill those seats using revenue-generating passengers and giving service to our community, somebody has suggested that we just buy those seats to make the airline whole. It doesn't make sense. You will, if you want to do $5 million worth of land acquisition to assure that you can extend the runway and be able to provide those seats, our share as a city is only $125,000. We will reach break even using land acquisition over blocking airline seats in 47 days. It is not a good move to pay the air carrier for 20 years to block seats. The next one, essential air service airline subsidies will exist forever, so those airlines' flights are not at risk? That's not true. Congress continually looks at essential air service and considers whether or not they want to continue it. That's a subsidy to the carrier to continue providing service to small communities. In the last two years, because of high labor costs and high fuel costs, what's happened is that subsidies at airports across the country whose carriers receive this have doubled in cost. Congress is going to have to make a decision. This is funded by overflight transit fees across the United States, the essential air service program is, and so they're going to have to make hard decisions whether or not they can continue to support. What that means is we have to be ready to stand on our own two feet without subsidies, and the only way we can do that is extend the runway so that the size of the, or I should say, the number of seats on the aircraft can be filled and they can stand on their own. One of the individuals who spoke to the planning commission last time said, "The community does not want more commercial flights." I have presented to the community more than 60 times since I arrived in 2018. The number one question that I get every single time is, "Where are you going to fly next? We want more service, not less." We've had nearly 180,000 people fly out of Prescott, in and out of Prescott in the last four years. There's a lot of people who want not only the commercial flights we have, but ones in the future. We're talking about San Francisco, San Diego, Seattle, Salt Lake, Dallas. We'd like to see those, and actually, Chicago is also of interest to folks. Those would be big contributions to our community, to our business community, and to our leisure travelers. You heard from an expert last time that said Santa Monica is closing because of a safety issue at the runway end. That's not accurate. The safety issue was an EMAS versus, that's an arrested materials arresting system at the end that was proposed. They ended up shortening the runway. That runway shortening already happened. Even with the addressing of the safety issue at Santa Monica, bottom line is that airport is going to be closed in 2028 because of noise and overflight concerns in the community, not because of a safety issue that's already been resolved a couple of years ago. The next thing, we've heard that the FAA's base airspace analysis is all that you need to get a new structure approved. That's not true. We have to protect many other surfaces, including these impact zones, including the airline splay. We evaluate all those items when a structure comes through the airport and through the city's review process. Another statement that was made is that the FAA has reviewed and approved all development agreements and plans around the airport, and they already gave us money, so they'll give us more. That's not true. The FAA does not individually review any development agreements. What they do is when a project goes forward and we go through the environmental, they watch to see if there's community opposition. If there is, then you haven't done your compatible land use. You are not going to be supported for additional funds. Next, some folks have suggested that the airport vicinity overlay district is not compliant with federal regulations. This was up on the screen last time, and I'm just going to put it up there again so everybody can see it. Local land use jurisdictions may have noise and land use compatibility standards that differ from the FAA's land use compatibility guidelines with respect to 65 dB. This is a specific FAA order. So the final question that we got, why 55 or 60 DNL? These are the reasons. Number one, it reflects decades of city plans. In fact, two decades of plans. Not one single city plan recommends staying with the 65 DNL. Second, safety first. Condors show noise, but they also show overflight. We're a really unique airport in that the majority of our traffic is a very consistent fleet. As such, when we see these contours that you see on the right-hand screen, these actually reflect where most of the overflight is. It's really important that we've made it clear, staff has made it clear. The edges of the areas that will have land use are controlled first and foremost by the actual impact zones. At no point are noise contours that extend beyond those zones used for any land use decision. So here's a good example. Here's the 60 DNL contour right here. Here's the 55 DNL contour. When it extends past this area down here, the 55 is ignored. First and foremost, we look at impacts. Next, the major benefit of this AVO is it locks in the current compatible uses that already exist in the community. I'd like you to draw your attention. Here's an example with the 60 DNL contour in green. This is the only properties in red. This one, this one, this one, and these two. This being the hospital site, and this being the Hanson Mining Operation that, believe it or not, is zone residential. The hospital situation, we've already addressed, George has addressed it. Thank you, George. It will be permitted to go. Little bit of rearranging on the site. It will be fine. Down here, there's no reason why homes should be in the Granite Creek or the wash or in a mining operation. So that was something that was just not addressed at an earlier time. It should be industrial. We will be, we're doing outreach to this homeowner, I'm sorry, this landowner, this landowner, and this landowner. And I want to draw your attention to the fact that we are in separate negotiations with Deepwell Ranch to address how this affects their area, and it's very, I'm really optimistic about the negotiations for settling out what we can do in this area. And I think I want to give credit to the Deepwell Ranch team for meeting with us extensively, four to five hours in the last two weeks. Thank you very much for all the time that you've spent to talk about what we're going to do. We're not at liberty to discuss this openly right now, but I'm really feeling positive we made great progress. That having been said, look at the limited impact. It's quite amazing that exactly what we're doing is, we are locking in the current compatible land uses and the airport can serve in its role as an industry magnet and bring folks into these industrial areas right in here, which are so important for the role of the airport and for the community. Next one, easements aren't enough. Citizens can still show up and protest airport operations and development. FAA will listen to that, so we have to be really careful to protect the areas from those folks that may be in opposition. People talk about the FAA DNL, the 65 DNL. They call it a standard. Technically, it's not a standard. It's a threshold of significance, and it's an antiquated one. It's based on 1970s and 1980s research. It fails to protect airports and citizens. The Congressional Research Office has indicated that as long as we can get funding, there is going to be additional protections that the FAA is going to support in the future. It's all based on funding because if they stretch it out, they have to be able to pay for additional sound mitigation and additional home acquisition. So that's something that they have to work with on funding. It is not a reason why our local community should go with an antiquated and unacceptable threshold. Remember that land use is a local decision. The FAA does not mandate it. They're fine with protecting past the 65. And the final thing is, we should acknowledge that Prescott has low rural ambient noise levels. If you notice on the chart over here, this is our ambient noise level. This is Phoenix. This is Atlanta. They all have the same threshold of significance. Bottom line is, we like the outdoors. We want to open our windows. Quality of life is important to our citizens. Ambient noise level is important for consideration. If you bring in a higher noise level, we're going to perceive it more than next to Sky Harbor, Atlanta, LAX, who also use the threshold of significance of 65 because in those communities, it's barely noticeable about the ambient noise level. And I'm open to answering any questions if you need any questions, any questions or clarification.
Any commissioner have any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, Tom Riley. Couple of questions for both you and for George. You talk about locking in current uses. And I'm not quite sure what that means. Current uses, Mr. Worley made a comment last meeting that when Commissioner Mr. Worley made a comment last meeting, that when Commissioner Graham asked whether residents in the AVO would be able to add a guest house to their property if they desired, Mr. Worley answered that they would be able to do so, so long as they follow the parameters set by the current zoning code. Now, the current zoning code, the way this was originally presented to us, would have referred to the Land Development Code.
That is the Land Development Code, correct.
Right. And when you said you were going to have the nonconforming at that point, and you're changing that now, it sounds, I'd be interested to find out more about that.
Yes.
But when you say you're locking in current uses, how does that dovetail with, you know, Section 10, 33B in the Land Development Code, which basically says that if you're a legal nonconforming, you can't do anything? So I guess I'm wondering, what does this mean with locking in current uses? Can you give us a little bit more?
Sure.
Background on that?
Absolutely. One of the things that we heard loudly from both the commission and the audience at the last meeting was, "Don't create nonconformance for those of us who are already there. You know, if I own a house there, if I own a business there, don't make me nonconforming by something new you're doing." And that's what we're trying to approach. By locking in, the term the airport director used, what we're saying is that your existing zoning limitations, which are already in place today before the AVO, continue to control the development of the property. If you're zoned a single family and you have a house in a single-family zoning, you are locked in to your existing zoning. We're not actually making any change to lock you in, that's an already existing condition. You can't put a convenience store in a residential zoned property. You can put a house in a residential zoned property, you can potentially add on to the house or build a shed or something like that on the property. You're subject to all the rules of whatever your zoning currently is. So the zoning that was in place, this case and most properties around here 20 years ago, is the same zoning that will control what happens on your property after the AVO. Again, subject to us working through these multiple options to get there. So that's the goal we're shooting for, is to not create any nonconformance of residential properties in the area of the airport, to protect those landowners and to give them the same comfort level and legal security in the use of their property that they have today.
So one of the things that you had mentioned last time, I brought up the example of, if my house burns down, you know, I can rebuild it, but if I tear the house down, I can't rebuild it.
That's due to Article 10, the nonconformance section of the Land Development Code. The only limitation on you replacing a structure in a manner that you described is if you're nonconforming. So again, based on your input and from the commission, the audience's input at the last meeting, we're trying not to create any nonconformances. And there are ways to provide protections for the airport without making an adverse impact on the property owner who's already there, already has a use, already has rights to that use, and we're trying to avoid taking any of those rights away or impeding any of the rights that they have. So again, what we're going to come back to you with in the next draft of this will be options to do exactly what I just described. No one becomes nonconforming, no one has to worry about voluntarily removing their residential property and not being able to put a residence back on it, because there are no other uses you can use for your property if you're zone residential. We don't want to make anyone nonconforming.
Sounds very interesting. I'm going to be looking forward to learning more about that.
There are two or three approaches, two or three approaches that we're looking at that can accomplish that, so look forward to those.
On the surface, it seems to me that if you're going to put a overlay in an area, yet not love any requirements for that overlay, why put an overlay?
We will have, we will have requirements in the overlay that will be requirements to help protect the airport, but they won't diminish the underlying zoning's allowances for land use. And we have that in other overlay districts. We have a commercial corridor overlay district that covers most of Willow Creek Road and all the way out to the east end of Prescott. That corridor doesn't affect the underlying commercial uses that are allowed along the roadway, so you're still limited by your underlying commercial zoning. The requirements in the overlay are additions to that, just like any other overlay, just like we described last meeting for the airport overlay, we add additional requirements. Those additional requirements can be navigation easements and disclosure forms, we talked about those. They may even be easily filled requirements that can be done without any cost to property owners. That's something else that we're working on. Those things would be additions on top of the zoning and not a replacement of the zoning that people already have.
I'm going to be very interested to see that. Thank you.
Challenge accepted.
Any other questions or comments? Tom Hutchinson, we still have you?
Yeah, I'm hanging on by my fingernails.
If no other comments, then we'll open it up to public comment. Kaylee has a list of people who want to speak. Just like our last meeting, we will not invoke the three-minute limit, but I will ask you to be considerate of other people so they can all have, everyone has a chance to speak. And even though we're not invoking a time limit, we'll give you a notice when you've been to 10 minutes. So with that, Kaylee, you can start calling them off, please.
Sure. Thank you. So again, we're going to follow the format of the last meeting in that I will ask the folks representing the major developers to go first, and then we will have the general public, and I will end by reading comments. So first, we have Stephen Polk. Come on up, Stephen. This is Rob Petrich, how do you say it, Petrich or Petcharich?
Petcharich.
Petcharich.
Thank you.
So Robert Petrich, I live in the city of Prescott. You have my address from the last meeting. I've been a resident for almost 50 years. Proud to live in Prescott. One thing that I think we all need to ask ourselves is, we've all heard today in the last meeting, all this discussion about the AVO and what the airport wants. Curiously lacking is any discussion about the contract that the city of Prescott has signed regarding the development agreement with James Depot Ranch and Chamberlain Development. It took two years to develop with many, 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 many public hearings and public comments and private meetings with staff. It really tells you what you can do, what you can't do, and here it is, a lot of effort jointly produced by the city's attorneys and attorneys for Deepwell Ranch and Mr. Chamberlain. And it's only 180 pages, and I'd like to go through each and every page with you today.
Bye.
So what I really would like to do is just hit the highlights, and my partner Stephen Polk will assist me with some slides, so let's get started. So the first page is really easy. It just shows you the cover sheet of the document. You can see at the top that it's recorded at the request of the city of Prescott. It's pretty small print, but the date at the top is it's recorded on December 13th, 2017, by the city clerk's office. And it's an agreement between the city of Prescott, James Depot Ranch Number 1 LLC, James Depot Ranch Number 2 LLC, Chamberlain Development LLC, and DW1 Investments LLC, which is a part of Chamberlain. And you'll see at the very bottom, it says city contract, number 218-115. So the city knows it's a contract. Next page, Stephen. Now, this is the first page, simply shows you again who the parties are, same as I've already mentioned, but it shows that this relates to 1,800 acres of Depot Ranch. I previously reported that Depot Ranch consists of 18,000 acres. City came to Depot and said, "We'd like to see some development. We'd like to see some sales tax, we want more residents. We want a nice controlled growth, we want a planned community." And Depot Ranch said, "We'll set aside only 10% of the ranch for this development. We'll keep the rest of the ranch vacant and it'll be ranch land." And we've adhered to that. You'll see paragraph 2.3 says anti-moratorium. The parties hereby acknowledge and agree that the development of the property will be phased, and that for the term of this agreement, no moratorium shall be imposed except as permitted by ARS 9-463.06 in effect on the effective date. There are no exceptions under that statute that applies to James Depot Ranch, so it means that there is no moratorium. Moratorium means that you cannot, the city cannot restrict, the use is permitted under this development agreement. City cannot delay permits that are validly presented to the city under the development agreement. Next slide, Stephen. Paragraph 3.12, the property is located in the Prescott Unified School District and the Chino Valley Unified School District. The owners will work diligently with the districts to ensure that the educational needs of the property residents are met. That in fact has happened. Depot Ranch has met with Prescott Unified Schools, Trinity Schools, a various number of different schools to try and provide free land to these schools for education purposes. Paragraph 7.1, airport navigation easement. The owner shall use the form attached here to his Exhibit J to provide the airport navigation easement required by the ANO. And that was the airport noise ordinance, I believe, so overlay, and that easement, in fact, we'll get to later as we progress through the relevant pages. That navigation easement was prepared. It gives full notice to the property owners that you're in the vicinity of an airport, you can expect noise from the airport. Was recorded, gives legal notice to the property owners. And I know notice was a big concern at our last meeting, not only is it a legal notice because it's recorded, it's going to show up in every escrow in your preliminary title report, every real estate contract by every realtor in the city says, "Buyer, you don't have a contract until you approve your preliminary title report." So if buyer gets a preliminary title report, sees there's a navigation easement, buyer wants to back out, buyer can. As I go through, I want to encourage the commission to ask any questions, so don't feel bad about interrupting me. Next slide, Stephen. Paragraph C, if you scroll up, what, under what paragraph is this? Paragraph 8.6, Time is the Essence. All of the provisions hereof show, and year to the benefit of, and be binding upon the successors and the signs of the parties pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute, Section 9-500.05D. So that means that it applies to not only Depot Ranch, Mr. Chamberlain and his company, but every homeowner who buys property within the Depot Ranch has the same rights under this development agreement. So those property owners are protected, and their rights cannot be restricted by the city. So the idea of imposing an AVO, which is a downzone, changes their zoning on anybody who bought property within James Depot Ranch is prevented by this agreement. This agreement is intended and does protect the rights of every buyer within Depot Ranch. So when you hear from owners, "Why are you downzoning my property? Why are you imposing a restriction?" That's a valid concern of 2,500 people. Correction, 2,500, 2,500 property owners. I don't know how many people, maybe three of every, three persons in every home might be an average. So a lot of people are concerned that their property rights not be taken by this AVO. I think you shouldn't, you missed a part there, Stephen, on the termination. I never thought this paragraph would be relevant, but based on discussions and comments from the city, apparently the city thinks it's important, says termination upon sale of, to the public. This agreement shall not impose any obligations and shall terminate with the execution or recordation of any further document or instrument as to any residential commercial lot which has been finally subdivided and sold to the end purchasers, that means home buyers, with a completed structure thereon for which a certificate of occupancy or equivalent has been issued. Any land that has been conveyed to... I think, go back to...
We're missing the rest of that, Rob.
All right. So let me see if I have the rest of it, I'll read it to you. So picking up from where we left off, any land that has been conveyed to in association, private utility, or government authority. Thereafter, such lot or land shall be released from and no longer be subject to the burdens of this agreement. Well, of course not. If you get to the point that the lot is fully developed, built out, all the utilities are in, the streets are in, the owner has got a building permit and has built a house, all of the obligations of the developer have been completed, so the buyer, the end purchaser, ends up with clean title. They're not going to be subject to all of these development requirements of putting in utilities and streets. That's already been done, so at this point, they get clear title.
Mr. Petcharich?
Yes.
For the benefit of those who are not from the legal profession, could you rephrase that in layman's language?
At this point, the subdivision has been built, all of the requirements of the developer under this development agreement have been met. Mr. Jones and his wife are buying a piece of property, so it's going to be their retirement home, they're putting their life savings into this property, they're moving to Prescott, they're going to make it their home. They expect that when they buy this property, that they get good title, clear title, free of any restrictions owed to the city of Prescott, because all of those restrictions under this agreement have already been met by the developer, or there wouldn't be a certificate of occupancy. Certificate of occupancy comes from the city and says, "We, the city, determine you have complied with everything. Your building's to code, you can occupy the premises and move in." So the whole purpose of this agreement is to protect the end user, the home buyer. When they buy within Depot Ranch property, they know they're going to get clear title.
We're at 11 minutes.
Thank you very much.
Stephen, I think you're also missing paragraph 8.9. Yes, so 8.9 says, amendment, no change or addition is to be made to this agreement except by a written amendment executed by the city and the owners. You know, that's critical. That says, this is a final agreement, the city's not going to reneg. Our word is our bond. You can count on the city of Prescott. We've done a development agreement with you, just like we have with other developers, and we're not going to change, we're not going to impose new restrictions on you after you buy. Next slide, Stephen. 8.20, except when any matter is expressly stated to be in the sole discretion of a party in performance of the agreement or in considering any requested changes. Do you have the next page, Stephen? Sorry, that's missing. I'll read it to you. Or in considering any requested extension of time, the parties agree that each will act in good faith and will not act unreasonably or arbitrarily or capriciously, and will not unreasonably withhold, delay, or condition any requested approval, acknowledgement, or consent. consent. So the AVO directly conflicts with that. The AVO is an attempt to change what the cities already agreed to, and you don't get a building permit unless you give the city a new navigation easement. And the AVO wants that new navigation easement, which is in addition to the one already recorded, to also say that the homeowner indemnifies the city of Prescott for many claims, objections regarding noise or airport complaints. The homeowners don't have to do that. That's not in the development agreement. It restricts the first right, the first amendment to the Constitution, right of free speech. We've heard from the airport director that one of her goals is to prevent public opposition to growth or development of the airport. Well, that's just not American. Of course, people can object. You can't restrict people from speaking their mind. They have an opinion, they're entitled to it, and particularly when their property rights are in issue, let them speak. Your job as the airport director is to, is to take complaints, deal with those complaints. Every airport in the country, what do we have, over 8,000 airports in the country? Have noise complaints. Every airport in the country have people that deal with noise complaints. People are entitled to speak. If the complaint is legitimate, deal with it. If it's not explained, maintain good public relations. Stephen, next slide. Oh, let's look at this, this page, because it's the signature page, and you see it's signed by the mayor of the city of Prescott, it's attested by the city clerk, and it's approved as to form by the city attorney.
Whose signature is that?
Well, it's hard to read. It's signed by Gregory Mangarelli.
Thank you.
Duly elected mayor at the time. And yes, we know there's been a change of mayor and council. That doesn't mean you get to change your contractual, contractual obligations. Next slide, Stephen. This is the Exhibit J, navigation easement, that everybody agreed, in fact, Depot Ranch offered to record and provide. And it states that the, the property owner has been advised that a portion of the property is located in the airport influence area, may be subject to influences, including but not limited to noise, vibrations, fumes, deposits of dust, or other particulate matter, fuel particle, which are incidental to the normal operation of aircraft, fear, interference with sleep, communication, and that these present and future influence might be annoying to the users of the land. And that these influences may change over time by virtue of greater numbers of aircraft, louder aircraft, aircraft, airport layout, or could result in increased influences. And if you keep reading, the owner releases the city for any of those things that occur. And that's recorded, so people in the vicinity of the airport know they're in the vicinity of the airport, or should know. And there's an navigation easement already recorded that's part of their title report before they buy that tells them this. They don't like it. They don't have to complete the contract. They have an out in the sales contract. Well, Stephen is finding that, I don't think you have the development agreement in your packet, and you're entitled to it. So the documents I'm reviewing today, if you don't have them, just ask staff. You should be provided everything you want. You'll recall the development agreement said it was adopted in pursuant to ARS 9-500.05. And here's that statute. And it says, any municipality by resolution or ordinance may, don't have to, may enter into a development agreement relating to property in the municipality, and to property located outside the incorporated area, if you wish. Paragraph C, a development agreement may be amended or canceled in whole or in part by mutual consent of the parties to the development agreement, or by their successors and interests or signs. In this case, you don't have that consent. Next slide, please. Here's the core of American government. This is from the Bill of Rights of the United States Constitution, Fifth Amendment. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. That's the backbone of our American democracy. I don't see anything in the AVO that says we're going to compensate 2,500 people for imposing a restriction on their property. As Commissioner Riley has stated, if there's no restrictions by the AVO, why do you want it? So there are restrictions. Let's figure out what they are. But why are you imposing, imposing restrictions on 2,500 property owners who have already bought their property without those restrictions? Is that retroactive or prospective? We talked about that last meeting. It's obviously retroactive. People have already bought their homes in reliance on the laws in existence. Now you want to pass a law that changes that. It goes, if passed, the AVO goes back in time and penalizes property owners in violation of the United States Constitution. Can't do it. Next slide, Stephen. That's a good slide. I think that's intended to be the Arizona Constitution, looking at my handwritten backup.
Mr. Petrich, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you and your organization part of the negotiations that was discussed earlier by Director Saboda?
Yes. Good question, Commissioner Riley. In fact, we met yesterday. As you know, Depot Ranch has filed a notice of impasse, a notice of default, under this development agreement with the city. And that causes then an impasse meeting, which was yesterday, with city representatives, city attorneys, Representative James Depot Ranch, their legal team. And that discussion was pretty good. The problem.
So why, oh, go ahead.
The problem is, the good news, we've agreed to continue discussions, we've agreed to exchange documents and information. Here's the problem. The city has not agreed to pause consideration of the AVO. The city is forcing the AVO forward. We just saw a timeline. This is supposed to go to the council in October. It's going to take longer than that to have these discussions. So if the city is serious about discussions, you should pause the AVO. Until the city pauses the AVO, we're forced to come to you and explain to you why the city can't do what the airport director wants to do. We're forced by our due diligence to continue to give you objections and why this does not work. So we're waiting for a sign of good faith from the city. City wants to pause the AVO, it's more likely that this is going to get resolved. You keep pushing the AVO, it's not going to get resolved. So city needs to decide whether James Depot Ranch, which has been a good friend of the city for decades, is friend or foe. And that's been our message for weeks and weeks and weeks.
In your opinion, sir, a pause on the AVO means what, in terms of time?
Table it. Table it while you're having discussions. If you're not successful, bring it back. Everybody preserves their rights.
Do you have a timeframe in your mind as to what the tabling, how long these discussions would take place to come to fruition?
No, I don't have a timeline in, in mind. I just know that it's not going to happen between now and October 25th. There's too much to be considered. I think the city's timeline is unrealistic. I'm sorry, Mr. Riley, if I can go back to the Arizona Constitution before your question.
Sorry, I didn't mean to throw you off.
You did, but I'm catching back up. Arizona Constitution, Article 2 mimics the language of the United States Constitution. In paragraph 4, it states, due process of law, no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. So now we've got the United States Constitution under the Bill of Rights and the Arizona Constitution that says you can't take away private property rights unless you're going to pay for them. And we don't see anything in the AVO that says we've got money budgeted to compensate Next slide, Stephen. So here's the statute that provides for the oath of office of every public official. That includes a city council member, includes planning commission members of every city and town, every board and commission. And it prescribes the form of the oath of office. And in paragraph E, it states that before any public official such as yourselves can take office, that you're required to swear under oath or affirm the following. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution laws of the state of Arizona, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially, and I think that's a key word, impartially, discharge the duties of the office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Now, each of you have signed your oath of office. It's a public record. Do you mean what you said? If so, you're bound by the United States Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona to not take private property without compensation. Now, I realize you're, you're put in a difficult position because this AVO was not proposed by you. You're just stuck as, as the planning commission is supposed to hear public comment and make recommendations. It comes from the city, not any private property owner. Comes from the airport. And here you are, appointed by the city council, you're stuck between a rock and a hard place. You're stuck between the United States Constitution and what the city council and the airport director would like to do. Which is more important to you? The Bill of Rights, the United States Constitution, or what the airport people would like to Next slide, Stephen. We talked about this last meeting. Here's the statute. It's Arizona Revised Statute 9-462.04. It talks about the process, your process. And it provides that a notice before any public hearing shall be sent to all owners affected, and you sent that notice to 2,500 property owners. It says, notice must be given at least 15 days before the hearing. And I showed you this last time. Here's, here's the notice. And you turn it over, it was mailed, postmarked August 12th. And it gave notice of a meeting on August 25th, of a public hearing. Take out your pencil and your calendar, carefully count the days. You only get 13 days. This is a jurisdictional requirement. So far, you haven't had any public hearing.
Excuse me, would you repeat what you just said?
So far, you've not had any public hearing. You've had a public meeting, but you haven't complied with this statute. Your notice mailed August 12th, only gives 13 days notice. Someone can't count to 15 days at City Hall. Next slide, Stephen. There's the notice. Says August 25th is your first public hearing. Also says that written correspondence must be received no later than noon on August 17th to be included in your packet. Well, it was only mailed August 12th. Soonest it would have been received would have been, that was a Friday, soonest that it would have been received would be on Monday, August 15th. So these 2,500 people had two days to figure out what the heck you were saying in this notice, and then decide if they had objections, and if they understood that there was a property taken, and their right to use the property was diminished, whether to file an objection or not. That does not sound like good faith notice. Stephen, any other slides? I'd like to respond briefly to comments already made by staff today. I am totally unclear from comments made by staff as to whether or not a non-conforming use will be permitted to expand. I understand they're saying if it's a residential use, you can continue to use it as residential. Commissioner Riley, last meeting asked, I think, six different times. We've got the transcript. Trying to figure this out, I don't think you ever got a clear answer. Today, I still don't have it clear. Maybe we have to wait to see more information from staff. The key is, if you're a non-conforming use, can you expand your use? So if you have bought a home, you're starting out, you buy a three-bedroom house, and time goes on, and your mother gets ill, she's elderly, and she needs a place to live, you want to add on, you want to add a guest house or a bedroom and a bathroom for mom, can you add-on square footage? And the reason it's confusing is because last time we met, there was a slide presented by staff that said no expansion. Yet the answer was, yes, you can expand. It's contradictory. Which is it? And is there going to be a non-conforming use label still put on 2,500 property owners? Because if you do, that hurts their values. Nobody wants to buy a property that's labeled as a non-conforming use. Think about your house. Think about when you might want to sell your house. If you have to tell your buyer, it's a non-conforming use, but it's okay, don't worry, the city knows about it, you'll be okay. Are you going to buy that house? Or are you going to buy one that does not have a non-conforming use concern? When you designate a piece of property as a non-conforming use, the value goes down. 10%, 20%? Depends on the appraiser. But it goes down. Is the city going to compensate people who bought homes that would now be subject to the AVO for 10% or 20% or 25%, whatever it is, of reduction in value because the city has retroactively applied a non-conforming use designation to their property? We saw a reference in the airport director's presentation to FAA Order 1050 that says the FAA will allow noise and land use that differ from the "The FAA will allow noise and land use that differ from the standard FAA designation of 65 DNL." That part's true. What's the rest of the regulation say? Because there's more. The rest of the regulation says, "But only if the city applies that same lower DNL to all other areas in the city." So if you're going to oppose a 55 DNL at the airport, are you going to do it to the Port House Plaza? To Whiskey Row? Prescott High School football field? Every construction site? Every aggregate mining site? Every major road? You're going to have to be consistent. And that's why cities don't go to 55 DNL, because they know they can't be consistent. I agree with the airport director that sure would be convenient to have a few more flights from Prescott. We've got two now, one to LA, one to Denver. But if you ask the people whose property rights are about to be taken, would you rather have more convenience of flights? Or would you rather have your property value kept the same? They're all going to say, "I don't want to lose money. I'll drive to Phoenix if I want to fly to New York." So the airport director's talking to the wrong people. She's not talking to the people that are adversely affected. She's talking to people that live someplace else. And of course, if they're not harmed, they'd like a few more flights. But really, here we are, city of Prescott. We've grown gradually over the 50 years I've been here. We're not ever going to be a big city. We don't want to be a big city. People don't move here to be in a big city. We're just a small city in a nice place in Arizona. Our growth is limited. We don't want a big airport. We don't want the airport to be so big and so dominant that it controls everything the city does, so big and so dominant that people lose private property rights. That's not what the citizens want. We're not Santa Monica. We don't have the population of Santa Monica. We don't want to be Santa Monica. Not a good comparison. Airport director said the navigation easement is not enough. Citizens can still speak in regard to the airport operations and airport growth. Well, there's concern, apparently, that citizens are going to go to FAA. Every time there's a request for more money to grow and grow the airport, citizens will start objecting, say, "We don't want more. Less is better for us. We don't want more noise. We don't want more aircraft." And maybe the airport director doesn't get all the money shafts for it. Those citizens have a right to speak. You should not be curtailing their right to speak under their First Amendment to the Constitution by having them imposed an AVO and a new navigation easement that says they give up their rights to object. So I go back to the very perceptive comment by Commissioner Riley. If this AVO does not restrict property rights, why do you need it? It's obvious that it does, or airport would not be pushing for more restrictions than an AVO. So you can't do it under the Development Agreement. You can't do it on the United States Constitution. You can't do it under the Arizona Constitution. You can't do it under Arizona statutes. We're trying to talk to the city. The city won't pause the AVO. It's scheduled to go to a vote in October to the council. So what's that tell you? Are there questions from the commissioners?
Do we have any questions for Mr. Petrich?
I just ask you to keep an open mind. This is public comment. Do not make up your mind. Do not advise people what your decision is. Keep an open mind, hear all the comments. That's your job. Don't prejudge. I ask that you be impartial. Consider the law and make your recommendations accordingly.
You are correct. We are between a rock and a hard spot, and that's why we get paid the big bucks.
Hey, we get free coffee and donuts.
And I recognize, Commissioner Gamboggi, that you did not sign up for this kind of question. You thought you were going to be handling citizens' requests for rezoning. Instead, it's a city request to rezone. It penalizes people. So you are between a rock and a hard place. I'm sorry that you're in that position.
Well, no need to apologize, because I think if I speak for all commissioners, including Mr. Hutchinson, who's on Zoom, we do live in a wonderful town. And the reason we're here is to hopefully make it better through processes like this. So it's okay. It's no hill for a hill climber.
It's not a job for sissies.
Not a job for sissies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is Susan Graham. I do have one question. Is it possible for me to get a copy of the contract that the city?
You should all have copies of the Development Agreement. It is a contract. Can city staff provide a copy of the Development Agreement to?
They've already done that for me.
We'll be happy to do that. And it's also recorded, and you have a pie counter recorder. So if you want to hop on their website, it'll take you about a minute to kind of type in Deepwell Ranch Development Agreement. But we'll send it to you.
I think it's a lot easier, Matt, if the city just provides hard copies to every member on the commission. Let them review it.
Do they have to be hard copies? I got mine in 2022.
It depends on the commission.
Double-sided.
Teasing.
Mr. Petrich, Stan Galagowski. So you did, you made a statement that we didn't receive the entire statement on the DNL. I'd like to also kind of see that as well. I don't know if.
Yes, that's a good idea. And again, I don't know why you're asking us. We can provide it. You should be asking city staff.
Staff, could we get that? Thank you. Thanks, sir.
If you don't get it, let us know. We'll give you a copy.
What are you asking for?
Yeah, there's a statement that was made about the DNL that Mr. Petrich said there. We didn't receive the entire statement.
The whole language from the FAA. Okay.
Correct, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrich.
Very much.
I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute break, and then we'll get back to our next speaker. We are about to reconvene the meeting, so would you take your seats, please?
Recording in progress.
And I would ask our city planner, George Worley, to speak to the, Rob brought up about the notification process and the dates. So for the benefit of myself, the commissioners, and everyone in this room, could you give us a better explanation of the notification process?
Certainly. We're required by state statute to notice public hearings and given options, several of those options, in fact. One of the options is to publish the notice in the newspaper, if there's a local newspaper. In fact, that is the first choice in state statute. Publish in a newspaper of general circulation, which we did 16 days in advance of the meeting. Publication is something that can be easily verified by contacting the courier. We also can provide a copy of the proof, if you're interested in that. If you don't have a general circulation newspaper, the statute says you can post the properties that are affected. Because the potential affected properties were so large in number, 2,500, there's no practical way to post those properties. And again, statute doesn't require posting them if you have a newspaper of general circulation. We decided to send the paper notices out to give owners, property owners, an additional notice to please contact us. So above and beyond state law. Our local zoning code proposes that we try to do all of them if practical. So we're required by statute to do one of three things. We're recommended by the Land Development Code to do all three if we can, but there's no way to post 2,500 properties with a poster board that says a public hearing is being held. So the mailed notice was in lieu of that. The publication in the newspaper met the statutory requirements, and the public hearing was legal.
Thank you, George. Kaylee, do we have any more speakers?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt, I have a question for our attorney. There have been a lot of information just given out about legalese, about constitutional issues, legal issues, notices, contacts, things like that. We as the commission, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't address those different things, but we as commissioners are, I am presuming that those issues are being addressed by the legal department? They are.
And the council is aware of the legal issues as well. And fundamentally, they'll be making the final decisions, as you know, you're a recommending body.
Right. But yes. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
More speakers. Oh, Stephen. Oh, we'll get to all the comment cards.
Thank you. This is Stephen Polk. On behalf of James Deepwell Ranch and the James Family Foundation. Mr. Vice Chairman, commissioners. A couple preliminary comments here. Yesterday was the first time that we heard about the AVO-R zoning district. And that would be a compromiser, a change by what's been presented to you by the city. And that the AVO-R zoning district would be in lieu of legal nonconforming use. I think this is a really good development. I think this is a way that could balance the property interests of homeowners while still fulfilling the needs of the airport. But yesterday was the first day we've heard of it. There's been nothing put down in writing today, and the details are important. So I think we all need to see, what does AVO-R mean? Are we allowed to use our property exactly the way we could use it today? Can the homeowners add on to their property, build a guest house, add additional square footage? I think these sorts of questions need to be answered. The second part from the presentation we saw today from the city was that there was a note on one of the slides that says, "James Deepwell Ranch will be exempted from the AVO." And I'll tell you, that's what we've been requesting. That's what we've asked for. We have a development agreement. We have a master plan in place that already protects the airport. We've made that request to the city, and to date, they have not provided us with that guarantee. And in fact, the draft of the AVO in front of you today still includes Deepwell Ranch. So again, we need to see in writing that the city is going to do these things they're telling us, and we need to see that before a decision can be made. And I want to make sure, when James Deepwell Ranch is exempted, that the homeowners within James Deepwell Ranch are also exempted. I want to make sure that they receive the same protections under the master plan that the master plan guarantees. And so I want to make sure that whatever draft comes out next does not say, once the property is sold to the final end user, homeowner, that it changes from the current zoning under the master plan to the AVO-R or legal nonconforming use. We need to make sure the protections extend to the actual people that live within Deepwell Ranch. Commissioner Riley, you asked about timeframes and the Deepwell Ranch's discussions with the city. I'll tell you that we first met with the city in early spring, February or March. And they had indicated, among other things, that step one would be they need to obtain appraisals for the properties. And they told us it'd probably be 180 days. Well, we met with the city yesterday and asked on the status of the appraisals. And they told us yesterday, the city council has not approved the appraisals yet. We're not even on day one of the appraisals. So when you're asking about time and trying to work out this disagreement between James Deepwell Ranch and the city, there's things the city has to do first in order for us to solve the problems. And one of them is obtaining these appraisals. I do want to present a couple documents on FAA noise. This is off of the FAA website. They call it FAA Noise History of Noise. And the one slide I want to show you from this is that this federal regulation, Part 150, defines the land use compatibility guidelines for aviation noise exposure. These guidelines include the adoption of the 65 DNL as the limit for residential land use compatibility. Down here, the website says, "They are guidelines only because the federal government does not regulate land use." While the 65 DNL is used by many state and local jurisdictions for planning and development purposes, these jurisdictions have discretion to adopt their own local guidelines. The jurisdictions have the ultimate responsibility for determining the acceptability of land uses at particular noise levels. And I think that's why we're here, and why we're here talking about noise, is because the FAA has said 65 is the level of significance. The community is free to choose a different level, but we need to ask ourselves, what kind of community are we? What are our community values? And for the majority, 65 is appropriate. And I think 65 is what we should be looking at. I'm going to present some additional slides that if we want to be forward-looking, the future 65 DNL noise contour is something to be considered. There's FAA guidance that talks about, if not today for 65, look at the noise contour for what the projected noise contour of 65 DNL will be in the future. And you have never seen a slide on the 65, on the future projected 65 DNL. The city is working on that. I understand they'll be producing that, but we haven't seen that today. As a community, I think we need to understand what that, what the projected noise contour looks like for the future 65, for the community and the commissioners to make appropriate decisions with respect to this AVO. This is an FAA advisory circular. It was issued. This one's a draft, which means it hasn't been approved yet. But when we're talking about being future-looking, forward-looking, this is what's currently being proposed for noise control and compatibility planning for airports. And what I want to show you on this is that this proposed future-looking draft says, "The purpose is NCP's Noise Compatibility Program." The purposes of the Noise Compatibility Program include confine the aircraft DNL values of 75 decibels or greater to areas within the airport boundary itself, and to establish and maintain compatible land uses in the areas between 65 and 75. So again, this draft that has just been issued, that they're looking at adopting, is really considering land use compatibility between 65 and 75. Now I want to show you here, this document recommends an airport noise overlay zone and an airport noise overlay district are sometimes used to regulate land use around airports. Great, that's what we're here talking about today. And the AVO, or Airport Noise Overlay Zone, can prohibit noise-sensitive uses near the airport or require a dedication of navigation easements. Again, I think what you're seeing from the city is consistent with the guidelines, but there's two sides to the story. The community is free to set its own values with respect to what noise planning is, what land use, what uses are compatible near the airport. The boundaries of the airport noise overlay are generally based on noise exposure contours. It is advisable to use future noise exposure contours that are periodically updated. So there it is in the guidance. We should be potentially looking at future 65. And the decision should either be as a community, do we choose the FAA, do we choose the federal law that says 65? law that says 65 is the level of significance? Or potentially, if you want to be more progressive, do you look at future 65 contour? But we don't know what that looks like. We don't know how that's going to affect us. We need to see it first. The document also includes, airport protection includes the purchase of development rights to prevent noncompatible land uses around the airport, and to acquire vacant land. The vacant land they're looking at is future 65, the existing or future DNL 65, or within a lower-level contour that is considered noncompatible under locally adopted land use guidelines. So again, that gets back to, we got to decide what's compatible. And I'll tell you what I think the community cares about. We care about having our quality of life, we care about having our property values protected, and we think 65 is appropriate. Here is FAA Order 5190.6B, effective November 22 of 2021. This document's less than a year old. This is the Airport Compliance Manual. It provides guidance to the FAA employees on the implementation of the airport compliance There's a chapter on airport noise. The chapter contains guidance on the sponsor's responsibilities with regard to restrictions on airport noise. In this case, the sponsor is the City of Prescott. So this chapter contains guidance on the City of Prescott's responsibility with regard to restricting airport noise. This paragraph talks about residents in the areas surrounding airports should seek to understand the effects of noise. Individual and community responses to aircraft noise differ substantially, and therefore, we need to be asking ourselves specifically, how our community feels about the noise. The FAA order recommends a balanced approach to noise mitigation. This example shows, developing reasonable alternatives is the nucleus of compatibility planning. It is unlikely that any single option by itself will be capable of totally solving the problems without having objectional impacts of its own. This, I'll zoom in on this. This is the Minneapolis Airport. The example it shows for noise mitigation says, "In the dark gray, acquire residential properties." That's within 75, that's within the 70 DNL, acquire the residential properties. And then it shows, "Within the 65 DNL, those properties would be eligible for noise insulation to reduce the noise effect." And then it shows, "Within the 60 DNL, mitigation is delayed." So that's the example in this current order, released less than a year ago, on noise planning. I think the same discussion here about 65. The FAA has determined that residential land use is normally compatible with noise levels of less than 65 DNL. Down here, it talks about, "The community is not precluded from adopting a different standard, but it cannot apply a different standard to aircraft noise than it does to all other noise sources in the community." Now, you will hear from Barbara Litchman today on what this means. I'll tell you what I understand it to mean. It's that if the city wants to adopt a lower noise threshold than 65 DNL, it can do so, but it cannot apply that different standard to aircraft noise than it does to all other noise sources in the community. We can't discriminate against just airport noise, we can't discriminate just against the properties out by the airport. If we're going to regulate noise stricter than this, it's got to be equally applied. And you'll see the following sentence. "A lowered noise threshold is not common, and most noise mitigation measures can be expected to address cumulative noise exposure of DNL 65 and higher." And finally, this document references a land use compatibility with sound levels. You'll see, over here, it shows what's the noise contour. Below 65, 65 to 70, 70 to 75, and louder. There's not even a table for below, for, the table's below 65. And what does it say? For residential, you can build residential below 65. Public uses, you can build below 65. Schools, hospitals, all below 65. In fact, what this says is land use compatibility for all land uses is appropriate below 65. Okay, so I just showed you some FAA documents and what the guidance is. Now I want to show you how the James Deepwell Ranch master plan has already incorporated these requirements, it has already done noise planning and airport protection. This is the master plan that was, that governs development out by the airport. And the city agreed to this document. The city agreed to the development agreement and that this is the zoning for the property. The master plan has been prepared to be in compliance with the general plan, the airport-specific area plan, and the airport master plan. Zoning around the airport involves the airport noise overlay district. That's the existing airport noise overlay district for the property. The airport noise overlay district lists allowed land uses in the compatibility table based on day-night noise levels. And the overlay district establishes standards for noise reduction and navigation easements. This document contemplates the balance between airport protection and the regional economic core. It says, "Airports and airport operators often prefer to locate airport facilities away from urban centers. However, the necessary infrastructure associated with an airport is also the infrastructure that sets the stage for private investment and in turn, employment cores, commercial cores, open space, and residential." So it contemplates a balanced vision of airport protection and a regional economic core. Long-term airport protection, regional economic care, and the Deepwell Ranch master plan balances It references the existing protections, which includes the Prescott Regional Airport master plan, and the airport-specific area plan, the existing zoning and the airport noise overlay, and in fact, the master plan already looked at the land uses normally compatible with various noise levels. This is that same table I just showed you. Below 65, residential, public uses, et cetera, are appropriate and allowed. When this master plan was adopted, the city and James Deepwell Ranch looked at airport comparisons. Scottsdale Airport master plan projects the 65 DNL contour as it is anticipated to be in 2032. So that's what Scottsdale is doing, the future 65. And it shows what development looks like around Scottsdale Airport here. There's a whole section in the master plan on airport protection and the airport noise overlay. It requires the dedication of an navigation easement. It prohibits single-family residential and school buildings within a certain area close to the airport. I'll show you a map of that. It prohibits any buildings whatsoever within an area even closer to the airport. I'll show you that map. It requires developers to provide written disclosures to all potential buyers, including a signed acknowledgement from the buyers, and a notice of proximity to be in the CCNRs for these properties. And it prohibits building heights. It requires those building heights to not exceed FAA regulations. Here's the map of where the navigation easement's required. It's the entirety of James Deepwell Ranch. Every property within this is subject to this navigation easement, within the entire Deepwell Ranch. Here's the map that shows where no residential or school is allowed. The airport's right here, this is the main runway. So right off the end of the main runway, there's a large section protected, no schools, no residential. Right here is the crosswind runway. So right off the end of the crosswind runway, no schools and no residential. Here's the runway protection. No buildings whatsoever are allowed to be here. This is the open space, right at the end of each runway. Crosswind runway, right at the end of the main runway. There's a whole noise compatibility section. This requires use of industry standards and techniques necessary to achieve interior noise level reduction. It's required for all structures within Exhibit 5.5. I'll show you that map. Noise level reduction requires the following construction standards. It's a whole list. Here's the noise abatement area. This covers about two-thirds of the entirety of Deepwell Ranch master plan, and it's consistent with those noise contours you've seen on the city's maps. That's where, that's where the specialized building techniques are required. So what I've just shown you is, the master plan specifically thought about the airport, specifically did noise reduction techniques, and specifically did airport protection. This is my last slide here. This is a map that summarizes it, and it overlays the airport, the aircraft impact zones. So the aircraft impact zones are where the FAA has found the most, it's most likely to have a crash. So you'll see here, this is Zone 1, most likely to have an airplane crash. That's all open space, nothing will ever be constructed here. Zone 2, where the planes take off, I'll show you the key over here. Green is open space. The green with the white lines is civic, which allows things, uses like churches, Arizona Philharmonic, you know, civic uses. And then residential is in yellow. So in Zone 2, consistent with FAA regulations, civic is allowed, but no residential. Zone 3, over here, civic only is allowed as well. And then Zone 4, you get down in here, you're allowed to do residential. Out here is 6, you can do residential all out here. The other thing I wanted to show you on this map is, when the city first came to us in early spring, what they let us know is, there was an error in the mapping that the city's professionals did 10 or 20 years ago. And they drew the aircraft impact zone short on the crosswind runway. And so what this overlay shows in purple is, this is the airport protection that's in the master plan. And it shows open space and civic required in Zones 2 and 3 here. Well, it turns out the mapping error needs to extend Zones 2 and 3 all the way out to here. It's about 130 acres over here, another 130 acres over here, more space in the middle. So they came to us and said, "We have a problem, can you help us fix it?" And we said, "Great, we're here to talk, we can help you fix this." And they said, "All right, step one, we need to get an appraisal." And we said, "We'll wait for you." We're still waiting on the appraisal. And we found out, the city council has not yet approved the appraisals. So that was my summary on how the master plan already protects the airport, how it already balances the economic vitality of this region with the airport. And our request to the city is that the AVO completely exempt Deepwell Ranch master plan from this AVO. And we want to make sure that extends to each and every homeowner within James Deepwell Ranch. And that concludes my presentation, I'm open to any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Polk. Any questions, Mr. Polk?
Yeah, Tom Hodgson here, offline. Steve, if this needed to be litigated, would you file in federal or state court?
Thank you, Tom. First thing I would say is, if this needed to be litigated, we would use a specialized land use litigation attorney. So I would not be filing this. And that decision between Yavapai County Superior Court here in Prescott, or federal court, that would be a decision for our litigator, not me.
Thank you. Any other questions? You're moving towards the microphone, but you're shaking your head no.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Polk.
Thank you.
Kaylee, who do we have next?
Okay, we have Jonathan Millet, counsel for YRMC. Well, we did. Okay. And he did, those packets I provided about 10 minutes ago were provided by him.
My name is Jonathan Millet. I'm an attorney and I represent Yavapai Regional Medical Center. Thank you for giving me some time. This is just to refresh where we kind of left our discussion last week. Under the current proposed district, YRMC's North Campus property would include a portion of it, about maybe 20%, is falling within the 60 DNL contour, and the rest of it falling Now, we, Robin Sabata spoke a little bit about rearranging the site, and this is, let me see if I can get this. This is the North Campus phasing plan as currently it stands. We're still working on developing it, but we haven't updated this yet. Now, there's open, there's an open space corridor, but there's also, under Phase 4, that is what would fall within the 60 DNL contour, as well as the health-related services. So that would actually take out quite a bit of the parcel, and while those are, some of them are a later development, as you, it's usually, you follow Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, it still would limit quite a portion of the economic use of that parcel. And it would be, it would be difficult to rearrange 20% of the site. Now, just to address this, the concern that, the concern under the current, and I understand that one, a different proposal will be coming, perhaps more than one, but currently, under hospital, it is permitted, under Zone 6, it normally would be, except that it's a noise-sensitive And so it would only be permitted outside of the 55. And if you go back to the map, the entire parcel is in, within the 55. So we're happy to hear that it's being reconsidered and that the property would probably be exempted from the 55, and hopefully the 60 as well, because if not, then this would be incompatible with the development agreement that YRMC already has. So zoning, you're well aware that you're balancing public interests as well as the rights that are given already to the existing property owners. So in addition to the constitutional rights, this is a proposition that was adopted in 2006, and this is how it was codified. It's pretty straightforward. If you have an existing right to use something, so- If you have an existing right to use something, so property, for example, that in YRMC's case is zoned for hospital, for medical, for residential that's related to medical uses, if there is a land use law that's enacted after that property is transferred to the owner, and it reduces the fair market value of the property, then the owner is entitled to just compensation. Not here to threaten that this is being violated. I'm just saying that I think we could all agree that, you know, as a member of the community and as an individual voter, I would say that we really don't want the AVO district to reduce the value, the fair market value of property owners, because we don't really want to have to incur the additional uses to try and pay for those. So, that means that the AVO district has to be carefully crafted to not reduce that fair market value. Like to take a slightly different tack today and talk about some approaches that other nearby communities have taken to address these same issues. Now, the FAA designates the airport as a small, non-hub airport. So, in this map, all of the stars represent airports that have that designation. So, Prescott is a star, Flagstaff is a star, Yuma is a star, and even, believe it or not, Tucson is a star. Not shown on this map is Henderson, Nevada. Henderson, Nevada is also a star. They're all small, non-hub airports. So, we looked at the zoning codes for these, so we just did four: Tucson, Yuma, Henderson, and Flagstaff. So, Tucson, Yuma, and Henderson, they're all at 65. They have not gone below that 65 DNL threshold. Flagstaff has opted for a lower one at 60, just as it's optional under the FAA. They've done that. Notably, they all permit residential use in the 65 and above. So, the proposed overlay district, if you're going to prohibit residential in the 55, you're actually going beyond what any of these four municipalities have actually enacted. Now, how do Tucson, Flagstaff, and Henderson? They've dealt with it with a noise level reduction. So, they require the building to reduce this. They're slightly different thresholds. Some of them require that the noise level be a certain level in the building, or the reduction be a certain number of decibels. Interestingly, Tucson and Henderson even allow residential above 70, as long as they have that, those protections to reduce the interior noise. And again, even Flagstaff permits the residential in its 60 to 65 DNL zone. They're not prohibiting that. Tucson, Yuma, and Henderson all permit in the 65 to 70 zone. Tucson, Flagstaff also permits it, but it would be in the 60 zone. Henderson would even go up to 70. And again, that means that you could, again, their maps are different than ours, but they could even be placed in the 65 zone. From YRMC's perspective, right now, we're in the 55 and 60 in the proposal, so that's what we're looking at. Finally, all four of the municipalities actually separate out the noise and the impact. I don't think this current ordinance really does that. It seems to almost merge the noise and the concerns about the risk of impact together. In my mind, those are two separate concerns. There's a risk that comes from an airplane failing and crashing, and there's a risk that comes from the concerns of noise and dissatisfaction with noise by the users or the owners or the residents of these properties. The noise zones for Tucson, Yuma, and Henderson focus on that abatement. So, the focus is to reduce and have better buildings so it reduces the noise, but still allow that development use. And I would make just perhaps maybe a marketing, I'm not a marketer, but I would say, taking a cue from these other municipalities, they call them risk zones or clear zones, maybe don't call it an impact zones, it sounds like something's already crashed. So, why am I talking about residential in addition to hospital? Because, as I said in my last presentation, residential matters. We can't leave the neighboring property, which is the area to the south, is residential. So, when you have this area that's here, this is currently zoned residential. And if this is not developed, and if this is in the new impact zone, it may or may not be developed, portions of it, but what that means is YRMC has to bring utilities and infrastructure to that North Campus property. Current dollars, it's about $4 million to put in around about. That's what the last roundabout nearby cost to design, develop, and put it in. And current dollars would be about $16 million to probably bring in the utilities to the edge of the North Campus property. YRMC has not planned for those costs, because when it purchased the property, it was under the expectation that development would reach the edge of the property. With this change, it won't. To what point? We don't know. But if YRMC has to bear those costs, it's going to take longer to put in the North Campus. So, we just, our proposal and what we're asking for is to honor that development agreement, exempt YRMC's parcels from the district. We'd like to have residential be permitted in the 55 and the 60 DNL zones if those are adopted. Just require the noise abatement in the construction, and as Mr. Polk has already presented, it sounds like they already have a good portion of that in the master plan. And finally, separate the ordinance out. And this is something that you could direct staff to do. They've already mentioned that they're planning to do it. It's something that you can do and ask them to present you with. And finally, we have not heard from the city or the staff yet. We anticipate it's going to happen. I have had other obligations. I have not reached out myself, but we do welcome that dialogue. I would say, speaking about the timeframe, I don't see how you can get conversations, drafts, and then a finalized draft already by October 5th or 6th, which was the timeline that Mr. Worley presented. I would be very, very, very surprised if that could happen, even if this was the only thing that everybody was working on, and I'm sure that everybody has more than one obligation presented before them. That's my presentation. Questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm waiting.
Absolutely.
I got to finish my sentence there. Okay. So, next, we will have speakers from the public, the general public. I have Richard Garthwaite and Mrs. C. Garthwaite.
Let's try it this way. How about that? Is it good? Okay. Hello. I am Sandra Garthwaite. I live at 1361 Warbler Way. I am in Saddlewood. I've spoken here before. That was a little fluffy. This is not going to be fluffy, so thank God for the lawyers. Here we are. There seems to be a general confusion that is being generated by Mr. Worley and Ms. Sabata. I think they're doing it on purpose. Don't know. But I have questions for them directly and questions for this commission. We're not anti-airport. I'm not anti-airport. I spent 20 years in the aviation industry. I'm not anti-airport. I think it's an important part of our city. It's actually awesome. However, we are a small city, again. We can and will expand our runway. We will expand the runway. We do not need an AVO right now to do that. That is a fact. We can make improvements on our airport without this AVO, and we will make improvements. We can add flights to our airport without this AVO. I want that really clear to the people at home, to people behind me, and to myself. These are facts. To want something because it is going to bring in a lot of money for the airport, over $100 million, is in the talking of it. The FAA does not require this AVO. I want that to be really clear to everyone. This AVO and any modification of it is not needed. It isn't wanted, it isn't needed for any of our improvements or extra flights or anything like that, or extending our runway, which we should do. To further secure funds for the airport, I have a question. Do you think you will not get funds in the future if you don't do this? Yes or no? Simple. Can she answer? Yes or no?
Mrs. Sabata?
I believe the funds are at risk. I believe the future of this airport is at risk if we do not preserve the zoning, like I had mentioned earlier. I think the AVO can preserve the existing zoning and be very effective.
I appreciate your answer. However, I don't think that's a yes or no answer, and it is your belief. I think people need to further look into that, because the FAA does not require it. Number 2, 3. By AZ statutes, what you are proposing is illegal. I have also contacted counsel. I wanted to know. It is illegal, what you are proposing. I don't understand why this commission or the city council doesn't already know that, but they do now. The land development agreement of 2017 is very clear. I looked over that, too. It's very clear. You cannot modify it without permission. Mayor Good and this committee, why are you considering this when you know what you are doing is illegal? I don't understand that, and as a city citizen, I am now watching you very closely, all of you, and this mayor and this council, because what else are you trying to slide through here? And this quickly, again, I didn't even get a notice in the mail. I didn't get that little postcard. A lot of people didn't. I think every one of these meetings now requires this city to announce what they're doing, announce when the meetings are way in advance, so that all of us can be, or participate in this. It is illegal under AZ laws. That is important to remember, too, not just our constitution, which, hello, that is important, but also AZ law. If you do pursue this, if this does pass and you are knowingly breaking AZ law, there will be numerous lawsuits against the city, against this council, and against Mr. Mayor. It is malfeasance, what you're doing, if you do this knowingly, knowing it is illegal. I'm going to keep it short today, because I know I want other people to talk. So, that's it. If you have any questions, I'm here. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'm Richard Garthwaite. I wasn't going to talk, but when I saw that schedule up there, the meetings that are proposed, it was very interesting. I thought that they're going to put out their new proposal on the 6th. Then, they're going to have the next meeting be a vote. I mean, I would hope that whatever new proposal they generate will have a public hearing, will have comments, and that the commission would have time to consider those comments, not vote the same day that this new proposal is first presented to people. That seems a little bit like pushing things through, rather than leaving a serious amount of time to consider new public comments on this new proposal, that we don't even know what it is yet. So, this might come in.
Thank you. Kaylee, next.
Yes, Darrell Ostermiller. And after that will be Whitney Walters and Bob Morrow, just so you guys can get ready.
Mayor, city council members, planning and zoning commissioners. My name's Darrell Ostermiller. I reside at 13850 North Spanish Barb Lane, Prescott, Arizona 86305. I'm a member of the Airport Advisory Committee. I'm also the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association National Organization Advocate for Prescott Regional Airport, and I'm the president of Prescott Users Airport Association. I speak today as an Airport Advisory Committee member. The letters and comments received on the AVO should be very telling. In fact, they are proof that the city's prior level of community and airport protection are not sufficient. These neighborhoods have low-flying aircraft signs, airport distance signs, current navigation easements requirements, as well as the obvious, being immediately adjacent to the airport. The airport impact zones and noise and overflight contours are already public documents, in many cases for more than a decade. The fortification of the AVO will not change that fact, and has not been proven to reduce property values. The property value is already solidified based on both the existing impacts and the housing market. Saddlewood was first brought to the public as an affordable housing for local workers. That idea didn't last long, as property values soared. In 2018, the values were listed as $255,000 to $285,000. In 2020, it was listed in the high 270s. Today, they're selling in the mid 400s. Saddlewood homeowners have had big gains. Better information to thousands of future purchasers with the proposed airport vicinity overlay only serves to do the right thing, to further protect and inform current and prospective residents. It is interesting that the most of the private citizens speaking to the commission currently reside in the 55 and 60 DNL contour areas. Clearly, this should serve as a warning to the commission and the city that protecting just within the 65 DNL noise and overflight level is insufficient. We are learning from these concerned neighbors who made the choice to purchase a home in a high overflight and noise area that these are the potential activists that we will face in the future. Activism easements, or navigation easements, I'm sorry, are not enough. The airport must be supported in order to continue its two most important roles, being a phenomenal economic and job generator, and providing our citizens safe and reliable access to the national airport transportation system. The airport is an industrial complex and has predictable impacts. Arguing that a daycare center, school, church, or large gathering places should be placed in an impact or safety zone with accident potential clearly defies common sense. And in this case of Deepwell Ranch, we have yet to see the promised 199 acres of true airport protection, open space. Instead, they are taking advantage of a contractual loophole that allows them to sidestep their open space promises, and instead insert an endless lineup of churches, schools, and homes into the impact zones. Where are the community amenities and economic development promised in Deepwell? Where are the restaurants and grocery stores? Where are the real airport protection, open space, and the runway buffers, which their slick marketing firm promised us in 2017 community meetings? The Yavapai Contractors Association has put out a letter in Sunday's newspaper filled with just the kind of rumors and misinformation that was pointed out earlier today. They spark flames by scaring locals with rumors of larger aircraft and loss of property value, but they are doing it with our regard to business travel needs and the protection of the airport and thousands of current and future residents. Those who fail to embrace intelligent planning do the community a disservice. Homeowners and businesses have been fed information to scare them and to question the AVO. This is why the AVO is, this is why the AVO in its strongest form is mandatory. It only protects and informs. It preserves- It preserves citizen safety, citizen quality of life, and fortifies continuation of existing compatible industrial buffer around the airport, and it's the right thing to do, and it makes common sense.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. Kaylee, who will we have next?
We have Whitney Walters.
Hi, thank you all. My name is Whitney Walters. I'm the senior pastor at Willow Hills Baptist Church in Prescott, Arizona 1071 Maglan Road. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't have PowerPoint, sorry. One of our goals as a church is to be a positive impact on our community. We do that a number of ways. We give $60,000 to $70,000 a year to people that are struggling financially in our community through help with medical bills, house payments, other things. We contribute strongly to Taylor Hicks Elementary School, other schools. We help families at Christmas, Thanksgiving. We do a lot of things to do that. That's a huge part of who we are. Over the past few years, we've grown, and we've sought a location where we can continue to do that and reach out more to our community. And as we look, we found land right next to Trinity Christian School, which is valuable to us. We've had a good relationship with them. They've used our facilities for the past 15 years. Being next to them, they would no longer need our facilities, but it allows us to not have to have as big a footprint. We, our busiest day is Sunday. Schools don't have a lot of traffic on Sunday, so we could utilize their parking and their gym and some other facilities there. It also is an area that was zoned for a church by the city. We presented a pact to the city. They told us, yes, there may be some sound issues that we would have. We did due diligence with that. All three of my kids go to Trinity, so I talked to them, talked to teachers. The noise was not a big issue for them. They have not had distraction. So we moved forward. We got the approval from the city. We got the FAA approval. And now it's come back after all that. We spent thousands of dollars now getting architect drawings, doing those things, and now it's coming back that this may be changed. And the thing that I'm confused on, and I get asked by, 700 people are asking me right now, and if you could help me answer, it'd be great, is how do we go and tell them, okay, we got approval from the city. The city said you can go forward. We got their word. We've invested financially on their work. And now there's this plan to go back and basically mean we've wasted all the money we've spent, all the time we've spent, even though we had that approval. And that's the question that I keep getting, and I don't know the answer. And so I'll just sit down, but I would like, how would you advise me to answer those 700 people that are asking me that question? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Kaylee, how many more do we have?
We do have some on Zoom, too, so I'll let Tammy answer that. But I have two more who would like to speak, and then I'm going to read four comments. And then Tammy, how many do we have on Zoom? Okay. She might be having difficulties. So usually we, I'll just let the other two speak. Okay, Bob Morrow.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
A little closer to the microphone.
A little bit closer? Okay. My name is Bob Morrow. I live at 6811 Gables Trail, Prescott.
Hello?
Sorry.
That's all right.
Tammy?
I was just testing my microphone, sorry.
Okay. How many commenters do you have on Zoom? Never mind.
Right now, we have three.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I thank you for this opportunity to present my views on the proposed AVO through this prepared statement. Like many that live around the airport, I received one of those infamous postcard notifications through the mail. Well, I didn't really give much thought to it. Everyone knows that the city wants the airport to grow. I figured that the zoning code must need to be revised to facilitate this planned growth. But then, my wife began to receive emails from the HOA and our builder, and those emails got my wife and some of the neighbors all ginned up. So I figured to keep peace in my house, I decided to investigate what this proposal was all about. I watched the Zoom video of your August 11 proceedings, took off a day of work to attend the meeting on August 25, and reviewed the materials presented at the mayor's ad hoc committee. Now, during the previous proceedings, airport director Dr. Zabata has reported that since 2018, under the current ANO, her office has been able to give grant assurances to the FAA, not the FBI, the FAA, in return for some $50 million in funding through the Airport Improvement Program. But she strongly suggests that this current code will inhibit her office's ability to give grant assurances to the FAA for future funding of the airport's improvement plans, most importantly, a runway extension. Well, to overcome this hurdle for future funding, Dr. Zabata is asking the city for a long overdue homework assignment, and that is to codify the city's 2015 general plan. As you know, the general plan dramatically changes the focal point and the purpose of our airport zoning code. And this proposed AVO is an attempt to advance the goals of this general plan. The proposed AVO recognizes the important value of grant assurances to protect the viability of the airport in support of commercial aviation services, so much so that the AVO is essentially a codification of the FAA's Airport Improvement Program. It includes requirements to comply with FAA standards for noise awareness and mitigation, explains that airport impact zones are established in accordance with FAA guidelines, states that noise contours be generated using FAA Aviation Environmental Design Tools and the DNL methodology. It also requires that developers must complete an FAA height obstruction evaluation through a Notice Criteria Tool. And subsection 7 establishes that development permits shall only be granted following an evaluation of critical airspace services under the Federal Aviation Regulation Part 77. As Dr. Zabata has presented, these amendments would advance the goals of the general plan by ensuring the safe operation of our airport, protect airport viability in support of commercial aviation service, and certainly provide her office the necessary tools to give grant assurances to the FAA in return for funding of future improvements at our airport. My only point of contention exists within subsection 5.2.8 of the proposed AVO. Specifically, I question the wisdom of relying on the permitting process as a means of acquiring navigation easements and a release of liability to the city, which are necessary to protect the city from potential liabilities arising from airport operations. But the Liability Protection Code is simply a holdover from the current ANO. Doesn't follow any important guidance from the FAA regarding land and easement acquisitions. As you may recall, I live at 6811 Gables Trail. For those who aren't familiar with where Gables Trail is located, it's just northwest of the intersection of Willow Creek and Warrior Way, near the site of the May 22 crash landing of a general aviation pilot. The arrow on this picture, and I know it's small. My wife couldn't get me a poster size in time, indicates my patio door, okay? Which is a mere 600 feet from this crash. I can assure you that had that plane crashed into my home, I would have had no less than a dozen attorneys offering to take my case and attempt to clean out the coffers of the city of Prescott. Under the passive approach to easement acquisition in the AVO, the present AVO, residents will reasonably delay their granting of an navigation easement and the release to the city of all liability until it becomes necessary, at some time, perhaps many years in the future, when they need a building permit, a simple building permit to replace a water heater, maybe a furnace, an air conditioner. All the while, the city is exposed to liability risk that could be detrimental to the viability of the airport. While city liability may be avoided in the event of commercial airline crashes, since these pilots are mandated by federal law to carry liability insurance, this same liability buffer may not exist in the event of another general aviation crash because pilots that are arriving from other areas are not bound by the airport's insurance requirements. I think it's safe to say that the city attorneys and their accountants do not like uncertainty, nor do the folks at the FAA. But subsection 5.2.8 is fully, full of uncertainty for the future viability of our airport. Therefore, to eliminate these uncertainties, I would ask that this subsection of the AVO code be prudently amended to, in accordance with FAA guidance, their guidelines regarding land and easement acquisitions. As a final note, I would ask the commission, in consultation with city attorneys, to determine whether subsection 5.2.8, as it is currently proposed, would survive a taking claim under the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. While I'm not an attorney, I do not wear a suit, as I understand it, requiring a navigation easement as a condition for an activity unrelated to the easement's purpose, such as requiring an navigation easement in exchange for a building permit to simply replace a home's water heater, is more likely to be considered a taking than is requiring an easement for a related purpose, such as requiring an easement in exchange for participation in a noise reduction program. That's all I have. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Michael Blackburn.
Good morning. My name is Michael Blackburn. I live at 5217 Porter.
You might have to get a little closer.
Closer to the microphone, please.
Sorry, guys. My address is 5217 Porter Creek in Prescott. It's part of Walden Farms. I must say, this is a little overwhelming. I'm sure it is for you guys as well. But the details involved in this plan, I mean, they're coming out every meeting a little differently from what was originally presented. And for us to object, I mean, I was very strongly objecting to this several weeks ago at that last meeting. Today, I'm just more confused. I think the general public is probably much in line with where I am. We would like to know the real purpose behind this change. We had a professional witness at the last meeting saying we didn't need this change to qualify for federal funds. And if that's true, why would we put the community through all this? There was one church that just spoke about their plans are going to be devastated. I attend another church that's already acquired land adjoining where we rent now. We've already got plans approved by the city. We've already acquired some of the materials. We're going to be financially devastated when this AVO goes through, and we're unable to build that church. What is the purpose that we need this if in fact, we can qualify for these funds now? I think that's something that really needs to be considered. The professional presentation of last week was rebuttaled this morning, unfortunately, without the presence of the professional presenter of last meeting. But she simply stated, we don't need it. And if we don't need it, please turn it down. One of the other things that I've been considering is this noise reduction. It's currently on the outer perimeter at 55, and they're talking about raising it to 60. That just sounds to most people like, well, gee, that's a minor increase. But I don't think most people understand that a decimal increase is a doubling of what it was before. So to go up from 50 to 55, or 55 to 60, is not a 10% increase. It's a five-fold increase. A whisper becomes a yell. And maybe you don't live close enough to the airport to be affected by that. I'm not in zone. That's going to be affected. I'm about 100 yards away from it. I'm not sure the noise is going to stop at this boundary on this map. The last meeting, I think you would have noted the amount of public that turned out. We received a notice that that meeting was going to happen, and you didn't have enough room in here for the people. I was part of 40 people in an off-site room. That notice didn't go out. At least I didn't get one. And looking around, I'm going to guess a lot of people didn't get a notice about this meeting. But it's necessary for you guys to communicate to us what your plans are. We need a greater understanding of what this is going to impact us. I mean, if my noise level is going to go up fivefold in my backyard, my quality of life is going to suck. I'm not going to want to sit and enjoy the beautiful view I've got, my new home. But these are things that you guys are charged with protecting. Advancing this airport at the cost of the residents is an unfair position to take. So I'm hoping that you will seriously consider the ramifications. Oh, by the way, I spent 20 years in real estate. And to tell me that adding a disclosure at sale that's a non-conforming property isn't going to affect the property value, you're wrong. You take 2,000 homes and reduce their value. It doesn't just affect 2,000 homes. These are comparable sales to all the other communities in that area. They're all going to be affected, not just by the noise, but by the reduced value. So I hope you'll consider those comments. I think if you looked at that turnout from the last meeting, the public is against this change. And I hope you will take into consideration the people that make up this town, the people who pay their taxes in this town, the people who want to live in this beautiful little town.
Thank you. Any questions? Kaylee, what's left?
Okay, we're going to take the Zoomers, Tammy.
Zoomers.
Okay, first, we have Michael McCumber.
Hi. Michael McCumber, 6287 Harvest Moon Avenue. Before you consider voting on this AVO, please pull up a satellite view of the Santa Monica Airport, where you will find a heavily condensed city area that extends nonstop from the ocean with just a tiny runway in between it all. The Prescott Airport's land looks to be five times the size of Santa Monica's. That alone would protect it. But then consider that the airport, specific and light industry, and even city-owned land to its east and periphery, and one could never imagine that the airport would be in the danger that was expressed by the airport director. As a homeowner in Saddlewood, it seems as if the city has orchestrated a great fraud scheme to attract upwards of $200 million in investment dollars in the Deepwell Ranch developments by zoning them residential as recently as five years ago, only now to artificially depress those values and the investments by deeming them non-conforming. When we receive our, when will we receive our property tax discounts as a result of the city's aggression? What about the compensation for the seizure of our property rights? Anyone who is willing to steal property rights away from homeowners without compensation should have no business being in this or any city government. The city's airport will essentially confiscate over 20% of the city's land without having to spend a dime, and that must seem like quite a good deal for the city, except for the. the increase in taxes necessary to pay the city's legal expenses following the move and forever tarnish reputation that will discourage even needed development in the future. Further, it would be a strategic blunder to depress development and land values in this area where development would be easier and better planned, given its flatter geography. That is, until you consider a possible motive with this change would be to discourage any development from occurring. In the past meeting, we heard from a hospital and a world arts center that were set to open for business, and each would bring extraordinary value to the citizens of the city. I was confident that Prescott is set for great things, sorry, Prescott, is set for great things in the future, except for this sour topic that is equally a barrier to these great things. As for us victims, the city's ordinance regarding legal nonconforming is quite chilling. Legal squabbles between a homeowner and its insurance company can lead to months or years delay in getting a home rebuilt following a calamity. Our city will instead force that land to become a pastoral lot in the middle of a housing development, as the home must be rebuilt and occupied in only 24 months. Further, you cannot raise your home and rebuild it, even if that would make the best sense due to a potential termite or other kind of damage. In closing, if you are inspired to vote for this AVO in the hopes of saving the airport from a danger it is not in, then please look at the Santa Monica Airport and Google Maps Satellite View, compare it to Prescott, and note how ridiculously unneeded this AVO is. This potential abuse of citizens by a city government is what one would expect, frankly, in California, not Arizona. Let's get this issue behind us so that we can get it stained on our city as short-lived as possible. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Next, Kaylee.
We're going to take the other two on Zoom, and then I have another person who'd like to come up to the podium.
Okay.
Okay, next, we have William Lawrence. I'll mute yourself. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm William Lawrence. I live at 6824 Golden Tree Drive. That's on the southern portion of Buswood in the Deepwell Ranch area. We're by the church there. I'm for the extended runway, but what I'm not for is rezoning or making my property uncompliant. But I want to talk a little bit about, more about safety around the airport. You know, I've lived here since May, and the gentleman that spoke earlier about the private plane that crashed by his property, that was the weekend we moved in. And I knew there was an airport here prior to when I moved in, so I tried to do a little research on my own. I knew there was going to be noise. I knew the orientation of the airport and relationship to my property. And I knew that Embry-Riddle, who utilizes the airport, would be having their student pilots flying all over the place, you know, around the airport to get their licenses. So I tried to find out the flight path of around the airport, and I couldn't find anything that was published. And after living here a while, I could sit out my front porch, and it's like a bunch of bees going around a beehive. There's really not a whole lot of structure with the planes practicing, the student pilots. They seem to be all over the place. Some of them do a pretty good job, but there's way too many that after they take off, and they're barely 300 feet, and they're cranking bank turns right over our residents. Now, I understand that you're allowed to fly at a lower elevation or altitude doing go-arounds, but practicing with these pilots, they should be flying more straight and get to a higher altitude, not flying over our homes at such a low, low altitude. So maybe to solve part of this problem, this would help abate some of the noise, too, as well, is to have a published flight path with, with the, what you're supposed to do for private pilots, you know, have a flight path or easement, as you will, to fly around the airport to do your touch-and-goes. It seems like some of these pilots, they're taking a shortcut over the residents so they could get back in line, so they could get one or two extra touch-and-goes done to help get them through their, you know, their requirements to become a pilot. I don't think that's right. I think it's very unsafe. I know FAA rules when you fly over a residential area, you're supposed to be, if you're within 2,000 feet of the residential area, you're supposed to be 1,000 feet in the air. These guys are flying way too low, and my concern is, you know, when we do lengthen the runway, and we do have maybe an extra carrier, which I would totally agree having so we could get around to more areas, but the amount of planes, private planes or student pilots flying, their, their time for flying would be more condensed in between the larger passenger jets. And I know Embry-Riddle, they have 75 planes, and sometimes it seems like all 75 are in the air at the same time. Because I was listening during this meeting, and I hear a plane like every 15, 20 seconds going by my home, sitting at my computer. So that's the thing that's most concerning to me. Obviously, noise is caused by planes, and we just have a lot of planes flying around in this airspace, and, and I think we need to get this under control.
Thank you very much.
And maybe something that's putting a marker or a pylon that they, the pilots can fly by before they reach a certain altitude, then turn and go around these areas. There's no reason for these planes to be flying over our homes, especially only at about 300 feet.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, the last.
We have one more.
Okay.
We have TK Moran.
Okay.
And I might remind, since we've been going at this a while, I might remind everyone that if someone has made the point earlier, please be respectful of the other people who want to talk and pass on repeating what we've heard before. Thank you.
TK?
Yes, good morning, and thank you for letting me speak again. TK Moran, my address is on record from the last meeting. I don't want to rehash everything that's been spoke about, but I did write down a couple bullet points. I totally agree with Mr. Petrich, and thank you, Mr. Polk, for your points. I do disagree with Dr. Sabata regarding road noise versus aircraft noise. I live just southwest of the traffic circle at Deepwell in A89, and during the commute hours, you can hear much more noise related to the aircraft flying over my house, especially if my windows are open or if I'm out enjoying a beverage on the patio. We've got Jake brakes, motorcycles, speedsters, and I would challenge you to take a survey of that noise and compare. Again, I'm not opposed to the airport expansion in any way, although I have not had the opportunity to use it yet. I appreciate it being there for the public. What I don't understand is this proposed legal nonconformity to my property that was approved back in 2017, and everything, all the Ts were dotted and all the Is, Is were dotted and the Ts were crossed. But then in 2021, I purchased the property, and I did get the aviation notice, and I signed it, and I was totally okay with that. So my question is, what's changed? I hear a lot of talk about airport protection, airport protection. What about the public and these people that have came here and bought these 2,500 homes? Who's protecting them? So, and one other thing to Mr. Worley, in today's age, not everybody gets a public newspaper. I think this is antiquated statute, public notice in a newspaper. And that should not be the only way that you notify residents of a public meeting. And just one last point, this, this topic, this proposal has really soured the city's motto, everybody's hometown. I, I have a very sour taste in my mouth, and I am against this new proposed AVO. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Kaylee.
Robin Ralston.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I did send an email to each one of you, and for some reason, they all bounced back to me. But my name is Robin Ralston, so I'm going to try to use my phone to just read that email, and I will hopefully skip all the parts that have already been addressed today.
Robin, could you give your address, please?
Yes, and I live in Saddlewood at 1369 Woodpecker Lane.
Thank you.
I also work at Trinity Christian School across the street from Saddlewood, where my son attends. And I also, after renting, I did rent here for a while in the beautiful gated community of Prescott Lakes for five years, I carefully researched and chose Saddlewood to build my home. I had recently become a single mom, raising two kids, so buying in Saddlewood was a safety net and an investment for me. Buying there just made sense for our future and current situation, and my son and I can walk to school and work. The residents, other residents of Saddlewood have purchased their homes in good faith. Most of the owners fall into two categories. One, young couples or young families who did everything possible just to be able to purchase their first home. And then two, retirees who purchased their home for retirement and plan to make profit for medical needs and aging care when they can no longer live in those homes. Some of the retirees have spent extra dollars for wheelchair accessibility and other disability needs inside their home. We love our community. We are already a very close community that shares holidays, cares for the sick and elderly among us, keeps others informed on community news, holds VBS in the park, rides bikes together, has walking groups, watches out for crime, cares for each other's pets when needed, gifts neighbors with furniture or household items they don't need, and so much more. So when we talk about the AVO possibility, we aren't talking about neighborhood names or structures on a plot. We are talking about people, homes, families, students at Embry-Riddle, who actually own homes together there, kids riding bicycles, teachers in our schools, pilots, a pilot lives in our neighborhood, plumbers, pharmacists, grandparents, newlyweds, and our beloved talking parrot. We are talking about people with homes, dreams, plans, and needs. Please understand and remember that you are entertaining changes that will affect the lives and futures of every person in Saddlewood and the other neighborhoods. The figure I heard has been 2,500 homes would be affected. If just four persons lived in each home, that's 10,000 people's lives you will directly affect for the negative. In Saddlewood, we have a lot of questions we'd respectfully like to ask. And this question has been asked today, but I just want to reiterate, how are we continuing to entertain the AVO after hearing clearly last week from Attorney Barbara Lickman and all the other speakers and here today as well, that we would be violating federal and state legal guidelines and the constitutions that are already in place? Not to mention, as we also heard from last week, Chamberlain and Dorn, and today, Chamberlain and the James Family Foundation and YRMC, and last week, Trinity Christian as well. All of those were under agreements with the Chamberlain and the James Family Foundation. So to do so, if we continue with this current AVO, it would bring on a deluge of lawsuits from all of these different people mentioned. And, and it's not a threat at all. It's just simply citizens trying to protect their homes, their properties, and their future. And I'm going to skip all that I had reiterated in my email from Barbara Lickman last week. And then here are some of our questions. What would the proposed new zoning restrictions and conditions be for the currently existing nonconforming properties and businesses? So far, we have not been provided with a fully detailed list. What would the fair disclosure include? How would it be worded? Disclosures will negatively affect sales when we begin talking about noise, possible dangers, and other flight impacts. By what percentage will our homes be devalued? Who will determine that loss? Will we be required to use city appraisers only when trying to sell our homes? What just compensation will you be providing homeowners for their property value loss? How will the city be able to afford compensation for all the buildings and structures currently residing in the proposed zoning area? Will legal nonconforming communities lose the service of police and firefighters? What happens to people who use their home as a home office? Will permits be required for renovations greater than 25% of their home appraisal value? Will there be restrictions on building or repairing active god damages unless damage is under 50% of home appraisal value? Will my house be demolished if damage exceeds 50%? Will there be minimum occupancy requirements? Will there be minimum parking requirements? Will expansion, additional structures, and remodeling be allowed? Will permits be required for anything regarding my home? Will there be plant and tree and height restrictions? Will there be light restrictions? What uses are allowed or restricted for my home? And none of those questions have been answered. Is it, or is it not true that Deepwell Ranch, James Family, and the Chamberlain developers already have a legal zoning agreement that states that the city of Prescott cannot issue a developmental zone change? Is it true that the FAA already approved that there is no air hazard to Deepwell Ranch when the full development plans were submitted and the impact zones 1 through 6 are fully protected already in the Deepwell Ranch plans? Our concerns are not just for our neighborhood homes, but also for the entire proposed Deepwell community. If the current AVO is adopted, all home building will cease. Two churches that have not started building yet will not be allowed to build. A fine arts school complex, which we heard from at the last meeting, will no longer be allowed. The hospital center will not be able to be built, as it should be, as we heard today. Trinity Christian may experience, as of yet, unstated restrictions on their full building plan. Our end of town was to be a second city center with amenities we all need, including grocery and gas, as well as churches, schools, and medical care. The city knew this. Why were these neighborhoods and Trinity allowed to be built?
10 minutes.
If they were too close to the airport? We can be creative. We can work together to make our city great and to have an airport that meets our needs without destroying people's homes and lives. There are other ways to grow the airport, and as we heard today, I hope they are coming up with a fabulous plan. But there are ways that would grow the airport that would be appropriate and within legal boundaries. So we are asking you not to adopt the AVO as it is in its current state, as it is detrimental to our city growth, to the value of our homes, and our quality of life. How the city of Prescott responds to this AVO question, we'll reveal what kind of integrity our city leaders have. Their response will show us if they honor and respect the law, if they are people of their word, and most of all, if they value the people of this community more than the money in their pockets. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to read three comments, and that, that will be it, unless any more popped up on Zoom. Okay, so.
Just for a minute, Kaylee, everyone okay going past noon? All right, let's go.
Okay. So first one is Lynn Gerard, and I believe she's, he or she is a resident Prescott. I sent in a five-page document, so I won't take up time speaking. I hope everyone has had a chance to read it. And they are a resident of Saddlewood. That was sent to you on Tuesday, the email. Daniel Roos, who lives on Cliff Edge Drive in Prescott. I'd like to propose a traffic pattern change for runways 12 through 30 to the north side of the runway, which would have the majority of noise in training operations to be over the airport, away from homes and Granite Dell's development. The aircraft would turn either left at Aircraft would turn either left at Highway 89A, on right turn at Highway 89, depending on the wind direction, and move the crash zone to areas clear of homes and businesses. Thank you. Lastly, a letter from Sandy Griffiths, Executive Director of Yabapai County Contractors Association, Vice Chair Gambotti and Commissioners. Unfortunately, I cannot be duplicated this morning. Maybe that is a good thing. And because of that, I am not able to be in two places at the same time. Serving on the Planning Commission is harder than anyone knows. The pressure of having residents, neighbors, friends, and business representatives staring at you, expecting you to do the right thing, is immense pressure. It is important to remember that decisions must be driven by adherence to the zoning ordinance in the land use law. Please remember to work from a position of encouraging appropriate development in the Deepwell Master Plan. From all points, is appropriate development with the public, sorry, is being served with various types and combinations of land uses through the approved DWR Master Plan created in 2017. DWR Master Plan encourages and permits a unified planning course that achieves a compatible mixture in variety of land uses, again, with an improved 2017 Master Plan. It is also important to realize that the proposed AVO is being tailored to impose and control the already approved Master Plan, forcing development from the already improved Zone 6 into a different, non-appropriate DNL noise contour zone. Relying on restrictive alternatives, such as what is being recommended and imposed on DWR, is inherently an unreasonable approach to addressing a noise concern. There is no reasonableness to this unjustly aspect of our proposed noise restriction to DWR, and the proposed restriction is not a rational response to substantiated noise problem. In addition, non-restrictive land use measures were never considered first; otherwise, they would have been considered in 2017. The proposed AVO wants to implement a change well after the fact of approved land uses and a master plan. Thank you for devoting your time and energy and taking on a role in the City of Prescott as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner. That's it.
That's it.
Yes.
Any Commissioners have any remarks before we finish today?
I do. Just a few comments. You know, kind of on behalf of the Commissioners here, you haven't heard a lot from us, and we haven't asked a lot of questions. We are absolutely in receive mode on all this. We're absorbing multiple, well, we've had multiple meetings on this, lots of comments, not just within here, but, you know, multiple letters that we've read, that we receive as well. Please know that they're not falling on deaf ears. We are taking every bit of information into consideration. So as you walk away today, know that, know that our silence isn't consent, know that our silence doesn't mean we're not listening, and that we absolutely are absorbing all of this information. Thank you.
Commissioner Riley?
I'd like to tack on just a little bit on that, and as folks out there in the public, you know, we're supposed to be getting a whole new series of things coming to us within the next few weeks. Pay attention. That would be my recommendation. Continue to pay attention. Thank you.
Commissioner Graham, do you have any comments?
No.
Then, George, you got something to show?
Just a real quick recap of the proposed schedule. This is clearly proposed. What you do and how long you take to do it is within the purview of this commission, so we're not rushing you to do anything. It is important, though, to understand that moving the process forward means getting out to the stakeholders, and that's our next step in the process. We do listen, and we do care what we hear from the public. We've made changes already, and we're making additional changes to try and address the concerns that we're hearing. The reason for public hearings is to get this information and to act on them. At this point, we want to have additional opportunity for people to ask us one-on-one questions. Today's meeting was rather solidly lopsidedly dominated by a couple of presentations. The public in general needs more time to talk to us, and these, in green, these tentative dates are the time for them to do that without presentations. So with that, again, I want to emphasize one important thing. We've heard from numerous stakeholders who've spoken today and who spoke last time about the concerns of creation of a nonconforming status for folks. Our goal is to not create a nonconforming status. That's the goal that staff's working towards in getting a new draft together, and as soon as we get a new draft together, we will get it out. The October 6 date up here is effectively a drop dead, but we will get it out before that, if at all possible. And with that, if you have questions of staff, we're still here and able to do that. If not...
If not, we can make closing comments?
Oh, yeah, Tom Hutchison here. I'm gonna say it a little differently than Stan. I think we're making good progress at thinking together. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing, and I'm gonna be quiet for the rest of the day.
You promised that before, I remember.
My staff just wrote that down. The dates that we've shown up here are still tentative because we're searching for locations that we can hold these. We're gonna get an actual schedule out on various city medium, Facebook, city website, et cetera, as soon as we can get those, those locations in place and can tell you for sure the dates and times.
Anyone else?
Do we need a motion to continue the public hearing?
I'm gonna get to that.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Just a few closing comments. As frustrated as some of you have appeared today, I want you to know that I'm encouraged. At the last meeting, I finished by saying, well, at the end of the meeting, we're more confused than we were than when we started, but we're confused about bigger things in more detail. At the end of today's meeting, I think we've learned a lot. I think we've learned a lot from staff. We've learned a lot from the public. There's things we need to wrestle with. Some of you, anyone that walked to that podium believes in what they said. There's no doubt in my mind or any of the other Commissioners. But we have to sift through the real facts. Some of you have asked, well, we want answers to these questions. And then some of you have said, well, you know, don't hurry the process. Well, the reason we don't have answers to the questions is because we're not hurrying the process, and it's work in process. So I hope you would join me in seeing the progress we made today, hopefully according to this schedule, and again, as George said, it's tentative. If you can see the October 25th, or it's October 13th, it's a potential vote. Work with us. Mr. Petrich, I think, said it best, that we're between a rock and a hard spot. We have to take in a lot of data, and we need to process it. So that's why we've extended the timeframe on this, and I hope, in the end, we'll come up with a conclusion that may not satisfy everybody, but it's a conclusion that we can all work with. So with that, I'm going to continue this meeting to the next stated meeting, which is scheduled for, for this topic is scheduled for October 13th.
Are you making that motion?
Yes.
Is someone gonna second that motion?
Second.
You gonna vote on that motion?
Yes, we are.
Thomas Hutchison? Tom, do you vote to continue the public hearing?
Yeah, I'm here now.
Yes.
Please repeat. I didn't catch it all.
We are moving to continue the public hearing for this item to a future date.
Date certain, October 13th.
Date certain, October 13th.
And you want an approval?
Yes.
Yes, I approve that.
Okay. Butch Tracy?
I would approve.
Susan Graham?
Approve.
Stan Galagowski?
Approve.
Tom Riley?
Approve.
Ted Gambotti?
Approve.
Okay. The motion passes 6-0.
Now we're done.